Called to order this special meeting of the Chisholm City Council for November 16th, 2022. Susan, could you take roll call, please?
Yes. The Councilor, Augustin.
Present.
Councilor, Michaela Raha.
Present.
Councilor, boss.
Here.
Councilor, ram.
Here.
Councilor, Vaki.
Here.
Mayor, Chanta.
Here. Adopt the agenda. We didn't destroy it too much here, having one extra week, but let me try to help us out. So Susan sent out a listing of what we're adding and removing, but we're going to put, under new business, we're going to put Bridget's item first, which will move Eileen down to B, will move Stephanie down to C, under Stephanie, we'll take up that CDBG application first. We have a number of items that were added, which will be accept the resignation of our ambulance director, MOU with MAP, appoint our interim ambulance director, and then post for the ambulance director, those will all be in that order under Stephanie. Then we'll go down to my items. We took up a few of those already with the meetings we had. So we'll take up my number three first will be to accept utility rate fees, the meeting with SCH on Third Street, number two, and then instead of scheduling a meeting, we'll actually be canvassing the votes, and then we'll finish with Cheyenne's item. Did I miss anything?
What's Cheyenne's item?
It's on the agenda already.
Okay, that's good.
So look for motion to adopt the agenda with those changes.
Motion.
Take Travis' second.
Support.
Cheyenne, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, public participation, it's actually an agenda item, but it's the last thing tonight, so we're going to bring up Jezzlin Saban to talk about bringing lights to Chisholm. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for allowing me to speak before you today on behalf of the Chisholm Downtown Revitalization Committee. This group has organized the Bring Light to Chisholm event over the past few years. It was actually the brainchild of the city of Chisholm here, so I want to give her some credit for that as well. And we are hoping to host this event again this year on December 1st. Historically, the downtown businesses have taken part by dressing up their windows and having events within the businesses themselves. This year, we're hoping to declare it as a citywide festival from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. on the evening of December 1st. We are hoping that that will increase the safety of people navigating around the street. Lots of kids roaming around that evening for the story stroll. We have some games planned in front of the local businesses, and so just want to make the event safe and easily available for folks. We'll start with the petting animals from Cooks Country Connection up just outside of the building here in the library. We've got Storytime up at the library at 5:00, and then 5:15 p.m. is when the lights turn on for the season. The other thing that we're hoping is to allow for a horse drawn carriage. Kelly Harris has a letter that I believe is enclosed in your packet. Again, Cooks Country Connection will be providing that horse drawn carriage, and they have experience driving it, I believe, in the Virginia and Hitting area as well, so they're familiar and comfortable with that process. And just want to really thank you for the support that you've shown for this event in years past, and we're really excited to celebrate with the local community in some of the darkest days of winter and have some fun. So really appreciate your consideration for the agenda item later on this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good event. It's fun. Weather, weather, you gotta pray for. It's so nice. You know, if it's 30, it's such a nice. All right. Council reports. Let's start with Adam tonight.
Good evening, everybody. On November 4th, I attended a meeting with St. Louis County Commissioners and the Essentia Health, along with Mayor Chanta and Commissioner Scraba, where we discussed the possibility of a new building that we've been talking about for quite some time over by Delta. And it was a very good meeting, and actually we left it with verbal, excuse me, with both the county and Essentia verbally committing to lease agreements with the developer. So I believe that we should be seeing some money with that coming up. That's very exciting news for the community. I would like to thank and congratulate Dylan Anderson on 10 years of service with the fire department. He just had his anniversary. And I would also like to thank everyone that came out and voted on November 8th. They had a very good turnout, which Chisholm always does. So I appreciate everyone taking that civic duty. Seriously, thank you, Jezz. Thank you very much. That's it.
Adam, just a moment, spin off to that first meeting you mentioned. Council, you probably remember Commissioner Jugovich coming in and asking the council if we can put some skin into that project a while back, couple of meetings back. Commissioner Nelson actually kind of explained it to both on behalf of the county and to the county, as well as to Essentia, that, you know, us having Attorney Lindsay work with Delta to draw up the agreement for the land, us applying for all the grants and being the fiscal agent to get this whole project going, that is Chisholm's commitment already. And he felt that Chisholm is well-invested in this already. So he defended us very well in that meeting. So the whole idea of Chisholm needing to do additional sort of got quiet then, so that was good. Not saying, you know, there won't be something in the future, but it left with a kind of a positive tone.
Question?
Yep.
Who agreed to the lease?
Essentia and the county. So they're each going to need a certain square footage of the new building.
Thank you, Adam. Cheyenne, report tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. No report.
Travis, report tonight. Good evening. You've got a lot of things going on.
Good evening. Yeah, it's been an exciting, exciting month for me. So I wore my Blue Streak blue today to thank the voters for passing the referendum here in town. I firmly believe that it's going to be a very great thing for this community, and I will make my pledge to you citizens that we will make a heck of a project out of that, and we'll have a great athletic complex and new East City Early Childhood through sixth grade school. So thank you to the voters. Congratulations to April and Adam on your victories, and welcome to Jed when he joins us. Aside from that, I'm headed to the state swimming tournament the minute this meeting is over. So that's all the reports that I'll give today.
We have a state swimmer here from Chisholm.
Make sure to.
Thank you, Travis. April, report tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. I just, you wore your Blue Streak pride shirt. I wore my ribbon skirt today. So I wanted to say happy National Native American Indian Heritage Month, and also happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And also, Chamber bucks. They're out, so go ahead and buy them. 25 bucks and you get 10 extra bucks to spend downtown. And Jim's is also having a Thanksgiving buffet dinner. Just make your reservations for November 24th for that. McWedge, thank you.
Thank you, April. Marty, report tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. I attended a campground meeting, also attended a Redhead meeting as a follow-up to the MCA event that happened back in October. We had all the writers and also attended the joint meeting with Balkan Township, as many of us did regarding the recycling and our fire and emergency service agreement. That's all I have.
Thank you, Marty. So I got a whole side of my paper written here, so let's just go down the list here. Just a reminder, December 15th is the Rams meeting. When I asked...
Eda.
Eda. I always get her name wrong. When I asked Eda about, I said, so who's invited? Basically, council, you know, administration, if you want to bring a spouse along. So it's December 15th at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. We need, December 2nd, we need a head count from Chisholm, so let Susan know. That's at 5:00, I think it says here somewhere? Yeah, social, we're at 5:00 dinner program at 6:00. Staff speakers, elected officials. They're still politicking. Okay. Follow-up, we had a gentleman come in talking about Heritage Manor and some concerns he had. I'm actually meeting with the administrator on Monday to both get a tour of the facility to kind of address some of it. As a city, there's no real violations there, but if there's anything they can do to try to be better neighbors, we're going to have that discussion. I talked to her for the longest time on the phone. So turns out she's the former mayor of Gilbert, Carl Oberstar's daughter, is the administrator at Heritage Manor. That's kind of crazy. Obviously, I want to congratulate Adam and April and Jed Hollowa coming in, and thank the rest of the candidates. You know, I think about the school board. I was sitting there listening to the debate going, so which ones are running and which ones are on the school board? And Bobby Raha said, oh, they're all on and nobody's running against them. So I mean, it's nice to have people running. You got to do that. It's healthy. Congratulate the school on a referendum. It's tough to pass those things, so it's going to be a great thing for this community. Congratulate your new senator, Rob Farnsworth, and your new representative, Dave Lizlegard. Those are the people you'll be talking to here after I'm gone. And of course, thank Julie Sandsteed for working with us in her time here. And, you know, the council's got a, you guys got a lot of new friends you got to make in our neighboring communities. Got a new mayor. I'm assuming there's probably some new council people over there. Buell has got a complete change on that side. These are all people we're working with right now. So I think that's it. Any questions or anything that came up, anybody, before we move on? All right, first panelist is our ambulance director. Good evening, Jess. We're all sad.
Good evening, everybody. I don't actually have an official report other than what's obviously going to be on the agenda here. I do want to take this opportunity to thank you guys for this opportunity. It's been amazing. I've learned a lot, and everything in my future is only possible because of this position. It's been an honor to work forward with all of you and the service. It's the hard work of Travis, future mayor there, have made it successful. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jess, for all you did.
Thank you. Yeah, I figured if I could get a year on you, we could get this thing going. So I approve. You got it. You got it done. Fire, we got any fire out there? No. Police chief.
I don't have an official report.
Anything for the chief, council?
Thanks for the send-offs. Equally, thank you to you, Jess. Those are, I tell you, the talk of the school when those things happen. So I got knowledgeable now knocking, saying, hey, we're ready. We're going to make the state tournament. I'm like, yes. Well, I didn't, I don't know if we extended that far, but.
Yeah. It's in the buys.
Yeah. So that could be an act.
I got to use my lights. That'd be great.
Right? All right, city engineer, report tonight, Jim.
I have no report, but would be happy to answer any questions you have, but please. Thank you.
Council, anything for Jim? Public works, Larry, report tonight.
Same, Mayor. Nothing urgent.
Council, anything for Larry?
Hey, what was the leak or what was the break?
The water main, we had a water main break today, and we just buttoned up. I just got done with them with MINDOT.
On the, on the Eighth Street?
Yeah. Water main. So that's all taped up. All the report probably next week.
So Third Avenue or Eighth Street?
Third Avenue, underneath the North Palm Lane, the 73. So that would have been for their replacement project back in about.
20,000, 20 years ago.
Was it a pipe, Larry, or was it a valve? Yeah, pipe.
All right, moving on. Parks and Rec, Bridget, our movie star.
Ooh, a movie star. Tell us.
Did you see the video?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You must look out for more videos. I think I'm going to have to now. Outside of what's on the agenda tonight, I did want to put a shout out. We are hiring, we lowered the age from 18 to 16 for the skate rink attendant, which is really exciting for community members, young ones who want to join our team over there. So this is, I imagine I'd like to start interviewing in the next week, so really public shout-out to all the kids out there who want their first job, the responsible ones, please and thank you. And then, oh, the other thing is that it is time for Redhead to prepare for fat biking and snowshoeing. So get ready for a fun winter season at Redhead. Any questions?
Thank Bridget.
What about this video?
Still.
Is it on Facebook or?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's on the Redhead site.
It's on the Redhead.
It's cute. You got to.
Have to go check.
Library, Katie, report tonight. Good evening.
No formal report tonight.
Anything for Katie? City attorney, report tonight.
No formal report, Mayor, but I am happy to field questions if the council has any.
Council, anything for Brian? City clerk, Eileen, report tonight.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Nice to see you all. I want us to say thank you, April, for mentioning Native American Heritage Month. And to progress that message, I wanted to recognize the Jibway people who were here originally before Chisholm was a city. So it's important to recognize that. And I wanted to encourage all Native American community members to stop by or attend a council meeting, come by and say hello. And I'll say hello in my language, yat eh, everyone. So I appreciate that. Thank you, April. Elections, a general election transpired last week, and I'm just truly amazed of the job that Christie does and her leadership of the team overseeing that whole process. It was a challenge because we had to count all the write-in votes, and we were there until about 1:15 in the morning. So it was a long day, but it's, I'm just so amazed at how everyone works together and very professional, and you would be proud of everyone that served there. So great team, great job, team. I recently communicated to all department heads that I'd like to do one last round of budget amendments for fiscal year 2022. I set a deadline of December 7th, so we can present any on the first council meeting in December. I know it's late in the year, but everyone's been busy, haven't, maybe not all department heads have had an opportunity to review their budgets, to see if an amendment is needed. So I just want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to do that. So just to give you a heads up. I also worked with several of the department heads to schedule a grants team meeting. We're going to get together to discuss our approach to the grant process and really look at how we can collaborate to pursue those for the city. So I'm excited for that. There seems to be a lot of enthusiasm from all of our department heads. And that's it. Any questions?
Just a comment. On behalf of the council, I'd like to also thank the election judges because I woke up at like 2:00 in the morning for whatever, and I looked at my phone and I seen that the referendum had passed four minutes earlier. It was posted, and I thought, oh my God, did they have a late night there. So that's, that had to be brutal getting through that. So thank you to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. City administrator, report. Good evening.
Good evening. Just a couple things. We do have some positions opening for appointment. We have one seat opening for the airport authority director to represent Chisholm. And then we also have a seat opening for the Central Iron Range Sanitary Sewer District. And then we also will have a seat opening for Economic Development Authority. Those will be posted on our website. If anybody's interested in any of those boards, please reach out or check the website for information on how to put your name in the hat for that. I, just a quick public safety building update. We, Eileen and I have been working on finalizing contracts and getting all of that in place. So hopefully by the beginning of December, we should have a contract with our construction manager and be able to present that to the council. So we've been working diligently on that, and then the other funding sources that go along with it. So that is all moving forward. We're still projected on our timeline. So that is good.
Council, anything for Stephanie? All right, that concludes our reports. We'll move on to consent agenda. Those are your list of bills. Communications, which are to September 6th, 2022 Police Commission meeting minutes. September 15th, 2022 HRA meeting minutes. September 21st, 2022 Public Utilities Commission meeting minutes. ARDC nomination for St. Louis County Communities Under 10,000 ARDC representative. Minutes of the previous city council meetings approved. October 24th, 2022 Joint Meeting with Balkan Township. October 26th, 2022 Rigler meeting minutes. Peril in overtime. I get a motion to accept the consent agenda. Make that motion. Thank you, Adam. Second.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Further discussion on consent agenda, corrections. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, new business. We're starting out with Bridget with Resolution Number 1122. Keep tabs on me tonight, okay? Resolution Number 1122-99, application to apply for regional park trail designation. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm asking the commission of the council, if you're there, to not only apply for this opportunity, but your support of the opportunity in line with the requirements of this application. It is, regional trails designation, as I stated in the memo, unlocks opportunities for Redhead to seek out grant opportunities that we otherwise wouldn't have. The, it's all through the state, and there's upwards of 8 million that become available. I did print out so that you have an understanding of the type, the different parks that have received this parks or trails designation. And so in our district, it's highlighted in yellow, but we're looking at like the Lee Park, the Park, Spirit Mountain, locally even the Savvy Trail has the designation, Stan Stone Robinson Park, various parks like that. And so there's multiple districts, but I highlighted the ones nearest to us. And I can answer any questions that you might have about this. I know when I started, it was one of the first things I was told, we need to get this trails designation going. And so it's not until now that I'm prepared to start on it. It will require a master plan, but the application does not require the master plan. And there's no timeline from the time that they determine through your application that you would qualify to be considered, that you need to turn in that master plan. You just kind of sit on a shelf and wait, and they'll wait for you to complete it.
Yeah, this is kind of a no-brainer. You know, like I said, ATV club, we get all our funding through the state. That's how you take care of trails that you don't charge to be on. So. Council, I'd look for a motion to adopt Resolution 1122-99 to get that process started so we can try to create a funding source for Redhead.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Marty. Second.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Further discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Bridget. Move on to Eileen, next. Eileen's first item will be fiscal year 2022 budget amendment notification for Arena Department.
Thank you, Mayor. So for this particular budget amendment, it's related to the Arena Department, and we're recognizing some additional revenues that were collected specific to the purchase of a new scoreboard. I elected to break out the $5,000 grant award because it was awarded in two different check payments, and I think it's appropriate to represent it as such. So what we're doing in this amendment is we're increasing our revenue budget for other local grants and aids to reflect that because it was not incorporated in the original budget for this revenue line item. And we're increasing our expense budget for other equipment because we did make that purchase of a new scoreboard. So just for informational purposes, I wanted to present that to council. Any questions?
Thank you, Eileen. Okay, so we'll move on to your next item, adopt final 2023 enterprise fund budgets.
So we have one change to the refuse 603 expense and revenue amounts, but it's very minor. And Larry, did you want to add anything to that?
It was just for the shared Balkan recycling site that the Chisholm residents use to bring their recyclables, and we pay 50% of the site costs to put the site.
So it resulted in some different numbers that were not incorporated in the original budget that was provided to council in the original packet. So it was just a minor change to the numbers under Refuse Fund 603. And I believe we have a copy of that. A copy of that. So this was, the revision to 603 was approved by the Public Utilities Commission today, as well as 601, 602 were approved in a previous meeting held on November 2nd. Revenues incorporate the rates from the 2021 Baker-Tilly Rate Study at the, as a basis, with Larry incorporating an additional rate increase to compensate for inflationary costs. The campground enterprise budget was composed by Bridget and Larry, who have received support from Administrator Scraba and the Campground Committee and their compilation of the campground budget. Revenues reflect a conservative rate increase, as well as an increase in expenditures for capital improvements. So I'm seeking your, the council's support in adopting this 2023 enterprise funding budgets.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple questions for you.
Yep, go ahead.
Thanks, Eileen. All right. So what was the additional rate increase for 2023? Was it 4% for the Baker and Tilly study?
That's the end. Oh, no, she's asking what to be.
So you're talking about the utility rate?
Yeah, yes.
Larry, I would appreciate your support on that, if you could provide some information.
Before we get too far off subject, but we're going to be discussing the actual rates later tonight, too.
But we have to approve this, right?
Yeah, this is actually their budgets, but, yeah, it's kind of, it goes hand in hand. Go ahead. It's, this is probably the most confusing thing a person does every year.
I just need to understand it.
Yes, absolutely. It is a lot. It's truly the water sewer and garbage budget, 38 pages. It's absolutely unbelievable. So, and we're working year over year to clean that up. So it is confusing. So the answer to your question is, the water fund was increased by 14%, and that was a 10% recommendation from the Baker-Tilly Rate Study because the water department has been losing money year over year.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah. So if I could give an example, last year, the water department made $7,000. And if you can imagine, it's like a $2 million budget. If you can imagine what can go wrong in a $2 million budget, we made $7,000 to cover those costs. It's, that's like barely holding the line. So there was an increase in water, 10% from the Baker-Tilly Rate Study, and 4% inflationary, which we all align, we all own that when inflation's over 8%. So I feel we did real well on that. On the sewer department, 7%. On the Sewer Department, 7%, and it was recommended 3% from the Baker Tilly Rate Study again, and then a 4% inflationary raise, cost of doing business, fire hydrants, or, you know, manual rebuilds, things like that, pumps, fuel, electricity, a lot of pumping. And then, and then the garbage was also 7%. 3% recommended from the rate study, and then a 4% inflationary cost of adjustment for expenses.
You said 3%? Or wait, 7%?
Yeah.
Baker and Tilly, sorry, suggested 3%, and then you added 4% for inflation?
Correct.
So 11% for that?
Seven.
Oh, seven total?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
So if we're in the negative, you know, in the water fund and the sewer fund, how do we make those funds up? Like, how do we fix that?
So are ratepayers. If I could give an example, in the Water Department per se, we're not a Walmart or another company that can just raise the prices on the shelf or something, or have employees.
Right.
We don't make 40% on the dollar per se. We break even, make a little bit more for expenses and emergencies. So we're holding the line as best we can and still running the Water Department and having reliable service, you know, and things like that, and providing a service to our customers. So it's the ratepayers. We see the expenses, we have to adjust the revenues, and we go to our, we listen to our folks, our ratepayers, we listen to the Public Utilities Commission, and tell us, you know, we work together on how we should run the business and run it efficiently and safely, and still be able to provide a service, so. If I could add to all three budgets, we really, really held the line, we felt that this year as a group, with the mayor and Public Utilities Commission, Stephanie and everybody, that 4% inflationary raises, there's no trucks, there's no equipment, there's no big purchases, there's no extras. So we know everyone's hurting, we know that it's hard, and we kept it at about $5 average increase through utility bill per month for all three utilities.
That's not bad at all, especially when we're, we'll be in the negative.
Yes. $5, so.
It's not bad at all.
It's also important to note the negatives that you're referring to.
Yes.
The losses, the balance.
Balance, yes.
Really, that incorporates non-cash item depreciation.
Depreciations.
So at the, with the handouts that you have, there's a highlighted amount in yellow that subtracts depreciation. So that really represents the cash flow for that enterprise fund for the year.
Thank you.
And those are all debit amounts.
That makes me feel better now. Mine wasn't in yellow.
I was gonna say, Eileen, thank you for that last explanation, because I was still trying to figure, you know, I've been in a lot of these meetings, and I'm still trying to figure some of it out.
That helps me a little bit better understand.
Counsel, any other questions? So we're looking to adopt Resolution 1122-96, which basically lays out the revenue expenses for the different enterprise funds.
Make that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, April. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first item under Stephanie is Resolution Number 1122-97, CDBG application.
So I'm just looking for the council approval for the Resolution Number 1122-97. We are submitting a CDBG application for the public safety building, just looking for some additional funding for that project. Just looking for council support.
Counsel, confirm motion to adopt a Resolution 1122-97. April?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Second for that?
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Next item, accept resignation from Jess Davis.
So, even though we don't want to do this, I guess I'm looking for a motion to accept the resignation of Jess Davis, and I want to thank her. She's done a really great job. She's impacted a lot of people in our community, and I firmly believe that nobody could have done what she did, and it's been a huge, it's been a huge, we've been very lucky to have her. And so, thank you so much for all you've done for us, and good luck, and we're happy for you to be able to move closer to your family.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Adam. Second?
Support.
Cheyenne?
Briefly, I would also just like to reiterate, most of the community won't know what you sacrificed for the community, what Kelly sacrificed for the community. Enough can't be said. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Well, I'll echo that. It was a big task, doing what we did, and you were instrumental in making the transition. It was a, it was a great accomplishment. Thank you.
Yeah, you did what we needed you to do. You did it, so appreciate it. Mary, I typically don't comment on these, but I can say that Jess is the only one that I've met that can draft a policy manual that beat me. It took me three sittings to get through it.
People will be able to pick it up when I leave and follow it.
Well done.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I never in my life would have said that I would be an EMR. Never in my life would I have said that. But Jess and Steph talked me into it, and I'm glad I did it. And, you know, if it wasn't for your leadership and, you know, calming me down when I couldn't hear someone's heartbeat the first few times I tried to take a blood pressure, you know, I mean, it's, it's rewarding work, and, you know, had you, had you not been there, I don't know that I would have done it. So I, I thank you very much.
Motion in support? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obviously, we'll send her a nice letter thanking her for her time here. What do we got next? Memo of understanding for MAP with regard to an interim. So I'll let you just jump on it.
Sure. So what we're looking for, for support, is the memo of understanding between the city and MAP. We're looking at hiring somebody in the interim role. Obviously, down the line here in the agenda, we'll be posting the position coming tomorrow, hopefully. But in that interim, we need to make sure that we have somebody there that makes sure the ambulance is staffed and everything. So what this is, is just giving that, being able to step out of the MAP union for a period of three months, and then that could be renewed for another three-month period, if so be it. So we're just looking for support for that.
Counsel, looking for motion to, what do we, approve the memorandum of understanding with MAP?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Travis, second?
Support.
Thank you, Adam. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Appoint Peyton Johnson as interim ambulance director.
So we have, we're looking to appoint Peyton Johnson. She's a current EMT, has our interim ambulance director. She's done similar work in the past. If we're able to appoint her tonight, Jess would be able to have some training time with her in the next couple of weeks, but she is familiar with, with the process and the equipment that we use. So I support this, just looking for an approval from the council.
Counsel, looking for motion to appoint Peyton Johnson as our interim ambulance director. All in, perform our search. Adam?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second for that?
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Further discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Posting for ambulance director, emergency manager.
So like I said, we're looking at posting the position starting tomorrow with the ambulance director, emergency manager position. This is a MAP union position. We will do a full search on it. A 21-day search is what I would like to do, so we're just looking for approval on that. We would post it just as we do any other director position, so it would be a larger search.
Motion.
Sorry.
Motion by Travis, second for that?
Support.
Second by Cheyenne.
Just a question. Is it internal, external, and, okay. Yeah, we just, yeah. Okay.
It's both?
Yeah, it'll just get posted.
And then, next week at our meeting, we're going to set up, we'll set up a committee to canvass the applications.
Yep.
No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, counsel, that big pile of things you had in front of you when you got here today, the very last page actually reflects what the real changes are in the utility rates with regard to the budgets and everything that happened at the PUC and Sanitary Sewer I'll read down them. It's, like you said, you know, monthly bill for minimal usage customer, $4.93 for the most part. Tips went up a little bit, too, but the dumps, too. So, you know, water for minimum usage, 1611 to 1837. Not huge, huge considering, I got to believe, our expenses, you know, with electricity and gas, huge, huge. Sewer, 2559 to 2738. Garbage, 1072 to 1147. Garbage tax, I don't know what that actually is.
That's, everyone in St. Louis County, Mayor pays that solid waste D tax.
It goes to the county.
And that's to run all the landfills and transfer stations and such in St. Louis County.
So $1.5 to $1.12, solid waste, 708 stayed the same. Usage fee, 1524 stayed the same. Recycling, 84 cents to 90 cents. That's it. Pretty much monthly bill increase, 493 for minimum usage. The PUC reviewed it, that's about as low as we can get it, so, based on everything. So we are going to need a motion to approve the rate increases so we can get them posted. I think we have to have them posted by December 1st. So people have a month to, so looking for a motion to accept the new rates for 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Travis. Second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. The next item was one that kind of fell through with SEH. Do we, Brian, before I even ask for a motion, do we, do we have some kind of reply? Are we ready to have a meeting with SEH now?
We are, Mayor. This afternoon, I did send out the breakdown, and I did receive a request back that they're, they're looking for a little bit of additional information, but we can get that out to them within a day or so.
Stephanie, do you have some ideas on when they thought they could meet, or when we could meet, or what do we think in here?
Two dates I received, is Monday, November 28th, or Wednesday, November 30th.
Say it again?
Monday, November 28th, or Wednesday, November 30th.
Let me just look at my calendar just for, I don't understand where I may have done this.
Is there a time?
5:30.
I can't do it on the 28th.
30th, how about the 30th for people?
I can make it work.
What time did you say?
5:30.
5:30 on the 30th?
Make a motion to set that meeting, 5:30 on the 30th?
You'll make the motion?
Yes.
Second for motion?
Second.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you Travis. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, my last item, Resolution Number 1122-100, canvas votes for the November 8, 2022 general election. Those are also in your pack, the council. Let me find it before we go any further, so I can see what I need to do here.
In the back page.
Basically, we're accepting results. I have no idea where it is. Oh, here it is. So basically, we're accepting the totals through this resolution. If there isn't any questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 1122-100.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Travis. Second for that?
Support.
Thank you, Marty. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that's me. All right, all we have left is the fun one. Counsel Mikla Raha, bringing lights to Chisholm Citywide Festival. Run with it.
Jess did a great job of explaining earlier. The downtown revitalization committee is looking for the city to declare a citywide festival on December 1st from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for bringing light to Chisholm community event.
Let me, let me add a little bit to it. Citywide Festival, closures of the 100, 200 block, the Lake Street, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Obviously, in-kind services to help getting barricades and getting things ready with them. That's the part we love doing. The closures, closing the event, da-da-da-da-da. Yeah, I wanted to, sorry, she mentioned it already, slay ride and everything. I just wanted to make sure we know what we're doing. So basically, we're going to close a couple of blocks for this event and, from 4:00 to 8:00, and help them with barricades and everything. So looking for a motion to allow that event? It's been a great thing in the past. It's a fun little event.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Adam, second?
Second.
Thank you, April.
Larry, are you on board with this? Are you okay with this?
Put it in your calendar. Nope, my phone right now.
Thank you, Larry.
We like it, it's fine.
Thank you.
The law is what's good.
Unless they spit on you.
Yeah.
All in favors? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's nothing else? Look for motion adjourned, counsel. What do we got? Oh, no, I can't do that. Oh, man, I thought I was going to get out of here. Yes, we need a motion to recess, to close session, to talk about our contract negotiations with our attorney and our negotiating teams. So look for motion to recess. Is that, is that proper? Need a motion recess, attorney?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Adam. Second?
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're going to clean out council chambers. We're going to go into a closed session. We have our tape recorder ready to go? We do need to do that, right, Brian?
Yes, for this, we do need to.
Okay, and then we will be, and then after the closed session, we'll reconvene. I don't believe we're going to be taking up any, any items at that point because we're, anything we might come up would have to be proposed back to the union anyway, probably. So, thank you, everyone.